Okay, right. Welcome to the Scrutiny Board Environment Housing and Communities, our January meeting. Happy New Year to all of the councillors present and all of the officers and all of our guests and to any members of the public who are watching this broadcast. Can I just go over some brief housekeeping? I'm not going to go through a great presentation on that, but you should see clearly the names of all councillors and all participants clearly coming up on the screen whenever they speak. You should see who everybody is so that you know the context of it. The only other point I'll make is in the event of me losing my connection, then councillor Graham will then take over chairing the board. And if she has problems as well, then councillor Gruen would then step in at that point, just so that we've got a degree of contingency, just in case there is to be any problems with the way that the meeting is going, because it's important that the meeting is carried out irrespective of how the connections are going. So what I want to do first of all is just go through items one to five. So Natasha?
Thank you Chair. So under agenda item number one, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under agenda item number two, there are no items which require the exclusion of the press or public. Agenda item three, there are no formal late items. Under agenda item four, if I could ask members to declare any discloseable pecuniary interests. I'll take silence as none. Under agenda item five, the only apologies I've received are from councillor Dobson. [S01] Thank you. Okay, in terms of... Right, so what I'd like to do now is I want the councillors,
as I'll go around, to introduce themselves so that everyone knows who everybody is. So I'll do it in alphabetical order. So councillor Actar. [S03] Yeah, good morning everyone. Javid Actar,
London and Woodhouse Ward. [S01] Councillor Bentley.
Morning, it's Jonathan Bentley. I'm councillor for Wheatwood.
Councillor Blackburn. [S05] Councillor Anne Blackburn, councillor for family and work. Councillor Collins. [S06] Good morning everyone. Councillor Dawn Collins for Horstford Ward. Councillor Gabriel. [S07] Councillor Gabriel, I've just put a message in chat. Councillor Gabriel's
just suffered a power cut. [S01] Oh. [S07] She said, "Can I have a cup of tea though?"
That's fine, that's fine. Councillor Graham. [S08] Morning councillor Pauline Graham,
Cross Gates and Winmore Ward. [S01] Councillor Khan. [S09] Good morning councillor Asgar Khan,
councillor for Burmattos from Richmond Hill Ward. [S01] Councillor Gruen.
Good morning everybody, Peter Gruen, Cross Gates and Winmore Ward. [S01] Councillor Harland.
Good morning everybody, Mary Harland, councillor for Kibbutz and Methi Ward.
Councillor Sharp. [S12] Morning everyone, Nicole Sharp, councillor for Temple News and Ward. Don't ask me why it's in this order, because councillor Brooks should have been called some time ago, but that's the way it's on the sheet. Councillor Brooks.
Morning councillor Katie Brooks, London and Woodhouse Ward. [S01] And councillor Smith.
Good morning everyone, councillor Trish Smith, representative Pudgey Ward.
Thank you. And I'm councillor Barry Anderson. I chair this particular scrutiny board and I represent Adeline Warthley Ward. So in terms of item six, the minutes, anybody get any questions on those or can we just move that they are accepted and are through record? [S04] Move it Chair. Yep, okay, thank you. So if we now move on to item seven, which is our reducing poverty and improving financial inclusion. So briefly, the background to this is that this scrutiny board has taken a very active interest in financial inclusion, universal credit and poverty. We've received a number of reports over the last few years and we get regular updates as to how things are going so that we can keep a watching brief on what's happening to make sure that the council are maximising the opportunities available to them. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to ask our guests to introduce themselves. So if I can start with councillor Cooper, please.
Morning everybody, councillor Deborah Cooper, executive board member for communities.
James Rogers, please. [S16] Morning James Rogers, director of community and environment. Lee Hemsworth. [S17] Morning Lee Hemsworth, chief officer for customer access and welfare. Joe Rowlands.
Sorry. [S18] It's okay. You're muted Joe. There we are. [S18] Sorry. Joe Rowlands, financial inclusion manager, Leeds City Council.
Thank you. Mandy Sawyer.
Chair, if I can just add, Mandy can't make the meeting this morning. Kevin Bruce is going to cover that particular item and I'm Gerard Tinsdale, Housing Leeds. [S01] Right. Okay, so Kevin,
are you? Kevin Bruce, are you? [S20] Yes, I'm here. I'm Kevin Bruce. I'm income service manager for Housing Leeds. Thank you. Nick Hart. Well, if he comes into the call, we will bring him in at the appropriate time. Now, our guests, Simon Betts. [S21] Yeah, hi, Simon Betts, partnership manager, Department for Work and Pensions. Is Rebecca in yet or has she still got problems accessing? [S01] She's dialled in Chair.
Yeah, darling. [S22] Hi Rebecca Owen, Department for Work and Pensions. I've managed to get in, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the effort. Diane Lyons.
Mornings Diane Lyons, chief executive, Citizens Advice Leeds. [S01] Thank you. Marilyn Bannister.
Hello, yeah Marilyn Bannister, Leeds Citizens Advice Service Delivery Manager.
Thank you. Nick Morgan.
Hi, Nick Morgan, Chapel Town Citizens Advice. [S01] Okay. Saleem Shaffey.
Good morning, Saleem Shaffey from Leeds Money Buddies. [S01] Thank you. And Sylvia Simpson.
Good morning Sylvia Simpson, CEO of Burmattos Community Projects and Money Buddies.
And last but by no means least, Chris Smith.
Morning Chris Mye from Leeds Credit Union. [S28] Thank you. So I don't think there's anybody in the city who doesn't know about, who isn't an expert on benefits that we've not got in. We have got the people who matter on this call today and that's why we've got so many, because it is a complicated issue, but we need the expertise so that we as elected members can be guided and to look and see how things are going, because it is an important thing. And for the sake of our money buddies people, they come with a glowing reference from councillor Khan, who explained in the pre-meeting the excellent work that you have done in Burmattos and Richmond Hill, but also the excellent work that money buddies have done citywide. So for anybody who's wondering who money buddies were, they give a lot of help in this particular area and you'll hear from more of them as the day, as the morning goes on. So, Lee, you're going to do a presentation which is going to take roughly half an hour and you're going to bring various partners in and out. So if you want to take over at this stage.
Okay, thank you. I'll just... It says, Becky, can you disable screen sharing so I can share my screen? Because it's not giving me the option to share my screen. The other option is if you've got the present. [S04] Is that working now Lee? That's showing... Because I'm not in the screen share, it should be working for you. [S04] No, it's still saying disabled.
You could make Lee co-host when you're able to share.
Nav, could you please make Lee co-host? That should be okay now, Lee.
That's it. You're mutated Lee.
Hopefully my screen is coming up now. [S04] Yes, yeah.
That's it. [S04] Can everyone see that? [S04] Yes.
Fabulous, thank you. Okay, so obviously we've got quite a big agenda and we've got a number of colleagues who are going to input on the slide, but obviously in the context of colleagues from Money Buddies and Chris as well, obviously there's the opportunity for them to contribute towards the end of the presentation if that's, if that's okay. So I'll just cover the sort of headlines and then cover some of the work that we've done within the council. Obviously, don't do it on our own, working with partners on the calls and elsewhere across the city just to cover the COVID-19 response. But then I'll bring Simon in to cover updates from DWP, Kevin who's going to cover the Housing Leeds and Diane who will give update in terms of advice, citizens advice update, if that's okay. I'll then open it up. I'll give obviously Chris and colleagues from Money Buddies the opportunity to come in there and then I'll just come back at the end. So that's the sort of running order. Hopefully we'll keep it within time. So just in terms of an update on this, we've put some slides here. So prior to COVID, the pandemic, so last March, the scale of the challenge as we knew was significant. Obviously, we've done a number of reports of this nature to this scrutiny board over a good couple of years now. So, you know, it wasn't, we knew that there was already a significant challenge. 174,000 people in Leeds living in relative poverty. We've done a lot of work in the city since 2003 to build the partnership that exists and served us so well, I think, since, since March last year around sort of financial insecurity and financial inclusion and issues of that nature. So we've done a great job, strong collaborative work in that's been in place and has helped us massively as a city. I think one of the key issues that we knew prior to COVID and had been borne out through the council's work around financial inclusion and the research that we commissioned from Salford University, was certainly from the last survey that was done in 2018, the last research, we found that households were less resilient and probably worse prepared for an external shock. So, I mean, that was obviously portentous in terms of what happened then with COVID. And I think that's been borne out by the evidence. What we found is that obviously those people who were potentially on the edge prior to COVID have become, have come into hardship as a result of what's happened. And obviously, we know that COVID has exacerbated existing inequalities in terms of certain, certain groups and communities. We know that within those figures, 35,000 children under 16 live in relative poverty and that data there, over 41,600 people in Leeds receive food through a food bank or food parcel provider in 2019 and 20. And that's an increase of 24%, sorry, on that figure. So obviously, we knew there was a significant challenge and prior to COVID, but obviously since March last year, the focus has very much been on helping those people who have been impacted by the pandemic. And we've got, there's some figures there. So since March 2020, over 70,000 people have claimed universal credit in Leeds. That's a 60% increase compared to 2019. And that, a significant rise has been directly attributable to hardship caused by the pandemic. Prior to March, there were an average of 600 claims registered in, in the city and this increased significantly from March and it peaked at over 6,800 new claims per week during April. So there was a significant rise and a significant increase in demand. And then obviously the advice agencies, which colleagues on the presentational cover later reported, a significant rise in inquiries related to benefits and universal credit, employment and housing over that period. In terms of what we've done, as I said before, the, the very strong and close relationship between a number of partners in the city and that's been in place since and growing since 2003. So very early in the response, in fact, so early in the response that we were still in, we met the first time in Civic. So we actually met face to face. We introduced the first sort of weekly bronze meeting around financial inclusion and obviously colleagues on this call today were involved in that and have been right the way through that, through the, through the pandemic. We used those to obviously share practice, key information and resources and keep people up to date in terms of what we were, what we were doing. In terms of some of that key activity, you'll all be aware of the sock, the helpline that was established in terms of the COVID line. And that was there to provide those people who were having to self-isolate or struggling with help with food shopping or prescription delivery or through the volunteer hubs, any, any sort of activity that required from, you know, cleaning right the way through to dog walking and those issues. And obviously, we had a significant growth in those. I think, own total received nearly 30,000 phone calls during that, from the sort of end of March through to the beginning of September. That, you'll know that that, the helpline in terms of the people answering the call, that stopped in September. The COVID line can still be, you can still ring the number, but it's parted through to our local welfare support service now who provide that, that service. So early doors, alongside the financial inclusion work that was set up very early and we had the weekly bronze meetings, we also established a food bronze meeting as well. And that was from very early in the process as well, another one that we first met in Civic, the first, the first time, but obviously quickly went on online after that. And in terms of, that was very much around the food process and we set up through local welfare support, linking in with the COVID helpline, the process whereby which we could get emergency food out to people, plus also provide food through the volunteer hubs. So the food warehouse that we set up at Logic Park played a massive role in that and was obviously clearly at the front in terms of delivering those direct deliveries and providing food within 24 hours. And I think we had a total, we did, I've got the figures here, I think upwards of 40,000 food parcels. There was, there were more parcels, there were more food bags than that, but parcels in terms of provision to a, to a family over the whole lifetime of the, the food warehouse. And it was a huge success, used colleagues, massive partnership effort from a range of partners, but also council colleagues in terms of staff who were redeployed into the food warehouse to help pack in, do deliveries and all of, all of that work that was done, all in a socially distanced manner, which was hence the fact we needed such a big warehouse to do that. But it was a monumental effort at the time. We stood the food warehouse down in September, the back end of September, because we, the more sustainable approach that we've introduced since then is through the community care hubs in the city. So we were provided, we've, we've moved to a system where they are providing the food and through local welfare, welfare support, we now refer direct through to the, the volunteer hubs for all food requests, even emergency, even emergency ones. And that's a much more sustainable footing. So obviously, everything we do now is driven through local welfare support. And, but in terms of what's on, available, it's pretty much as it was during the worst of the pandemic last year. You can still get emergency food support, you can still get help with your prescriptions and all of food within, sorry, help with any other support that you need. And that's all managed now through local welfare support and the volunteer hubs. We also had council tax hardship. So we got funding from central government to help out people with their council tax. We did that through, we got just nearly, just short nine million pounds to do that. The way we, the government guidance was to offer £150 to people to help them with their council tax. What, the scheme we had in Leeds was slightly different. We did, we were able to offer everybody, 100, everybody who was eligible through council tax support, £150. But in lots of cases, we were able to up that. So we moved by and large our local council tax support system, we moved it from a 75% scheme to 100% scheme. And that enabled anybody who was in receipt of council tax support to receive 100%. So they had no council tax support. So I think the average payment we were able to give was something like £250. And it brought a lot more people into the eligibility than would have been if we just offered the £150 scheme. Sorry, the average was 236 per household. We factored in potential growth. So we saw in significant growth, certainly early on in the pandemic. We saw about 4,000 growth in total for council tax hardship, sorry, council tax support. So we were able to support them as well. We are still working using that money to provide, we provided that support, but we've now moved that on to look at certainly single parent households and families with sort of legacy council tax debt and we're working to pay that off using the hardship funding. There's about a million pound left of that funding and we continue to, to work through cohorts of people to help them with, with their council tax. And the other activity we managed through, because we kept some of the community hub, we kept four community hubs open, certainly during the first lockdown and then we were able to open seven during the second lockdown. We were able to maintain access to Leeds Credit Union branch, branch accessibility. So people had access to cash. And obviously, we worked very closely with Chris and his team and did brilliant work around supporting people with fuel payments and cash and things like that. But I'm sure if Chris is able to stay on the call, I'm sure I'll give him the opportunity to update on, on that. And a key communication tool for us was Leeds Money Information Centre website. All the information we had, all the information we were able to gather through the weekly bronze meetings, any changes in service delivery, we kept the Money Information Centre website updated and that was linked through obviously from our, our own website into that. So that was like a single point of contact and single source of information for, for that. So a huge city effort really around a lot of these, a lot of this area in terms of helping people. Some of the other areas we did, self-isolation payments. Again, we've got funding for that. That's for people who need to self-isolate. We're able to offer a £500 payment if they can't work. There's some criteria, it's a government scheme and we, we continue to support that. We have a local discretionary scheme as well, which is slightly more, brings more people into eligibility for that self-isolation payment. And we get government funding for that, but we've been able to supplement that with local funding. Today, we've had about 3,000 applicants for the self-isolation payment. We've about 50, just 52% of applicants are successful in getting the payment. And principally, the main reasons why people don't get it is they're not actually in financial difficulty when they provide us with the information or they're not in receipt of benefit payments, which is one of the, one of the criteria for that. But that's a successful scheme. The government have just extended that to the end of March. So we continue providing that. The COVID winter support grant that was funded, again, we got from central government to provide support from beginning of December through to the end of March around, principally around food and utilities. So the work that was done to provide free school meals over Christmas and over February half term is, is a large part of that, that funding. We're also providing fuel support to all 43,000 households eligible for council tax support. And we do, we're working with the post office to get that funding out to them. We're also providing smaller grants through Leeds Food Aid Network to a number of about 40 organisations in the city who provide food and support to vulnerable people. Plus we're spending, there's some money going towards period poverty and baby products and baby bank through that COVID-19 winter support grant. So that's what we're doing on that. We did a lot of work around adapting the healthy holiday project so that the, the schemes we run in partnership with Leeds Community Foundation and Children's Services. Obviously, we normally do that on site where we provide food and activity for children. Haven't been able to do that. So instead, we've done a lot of that online and provided packed lunches and food hampers where, where that's been achievable. Obviously, a lot of planning going on for 2021 because there's been a significant uplift in government funding for this sort of activity. So we're just working on that. Last summer, we were also able to introduce the Leeds School Uniform Exchange, again, working in partnership to do that. And that was really successful as a pilot. So something that we're going to be building on this year. And then there's a couple of other areas there where we've done some stuff. So we've, we've introduced a help with funeral cost booklet, working with partners in the city for, to provide funeral costs for the, for those who are financially vulnerable. We've done a lot of work with LGA and government departments to raise awareness and issues related to poverty, welfare and financial inclusion. And we've also worked with the University of Leeds on the welfare at social distance research, which I think is referenced in the, in the report. So that's it from a general COVID update. If, obviously we'll take questions at the end, but if I could pass over to Simon for doing his, his update. And Simon, when you want me to move the slides on, just let me know. [S21] Okay.
Right, okay. Yeah, so obviously likely a massive challenge for us internally. And obviously, we kind of had to sort of look at how we were going to sort of manage the business, given obviously the huge number of people actually making claims to benefit. So one of the first things we did, obviously nationally, we brought in an increase to the universal credit, an uplift of £20 a week to actually help people who were claiming benefit. We then also temporarily suspended recovery of overpayments and deductions from people's benefits between April and July to obviously sort of make the financial position easier for people. And really, our main focus was around trying to ensure that we helped people to make the claim to benefit and to maintain it. So we temporarily sort of suspended requirements to sort of look, look for work and conditionality, certainly sanctioning and the minimum income floor as well for self-employment. That, that was, was actually dispensed with, again, to obviously make it easier for people to, to receive money that they're entitled to. So as I say, we had to then kind of look at how we were going to sort of manage the, the business. And obviously, for the first sort of couple of weeks, the offices were closed, but we made the quick decision to reopen so that we had support available for people who were vulnerable and couldn't actually access our services through digital or telephone channels. And that has remained the position right the way through and continues. And we do, our doors are still open and we are still sort of supporting those customers who, who need our help in that way. But in the main, we're obviously trying to do everything sort of digitally. But it was obviously painfully obvious with the numbers of people making claims to benefit that we weren't going to be able to, to manage on the existing resource that we had. So nationally, we actually called on 10,000 of our colleagues from all areas of DWP to actually help us to support with the, the taking of the initial claim and actually sort of verifying identification, because obviously normally that's one of the things that's done face to face where we couldn't do that. So we were, we were doing all of that, you know, over the telephone, under what we term to trust and protect. Obviously, that gave us some issues in terms of sort of possible sort of abuse of claims and we did... And we did sort of notice an increase in, in the number of sort of, um, fraudulent claims, particularly around stolen identity. So we've had all those challenges to, to manage as well. Um, but then kind of, although obviously sort of numbers of claims have slipped back um, to a more sort of realistic level, they are still sort of thirty to forty percent above what they were prior to COVID. Um, so again, in response to that, what we've now looked at, at doing is to increase the number of work coaches that we've got employed across D W P. Um, and for Leeds specifically, that will mean around another hundred and fifty work coaches in place by, by the end of March. Um, the other things on that slide there, obviously we've sort of suspended the, the managed migration. Um, of moving anybody else on to universal credit and there's no time scales for, um, when um, that will be picked up again. Um, and also the, the S T P gateway, um, which is for people who are on sort of legacy benefits in receipt of severe disability premium. Um, that will actually end as of the end of this month. So it will mean that anybody who actually needs to make a claim to universal credit will, will be, um, sort of directed that way. Okay, Lee, if you could move on to next slide for me.
Sorry, it's just frozen. There you go.
Okay, all right, thanks. Um, yeah, some recognition we wanted to give, um, in internally, because obviously as Lee said earlier, it's been a, a massive sort of partnership effort um, right across, um, the, the city with all of this. And but certainly internally, our social justice team, um, picked up an awful lot of work in terms of supporting the most vulnerable customers. And we ensured that we sort of had that pipeline open, if you like, and that support available to, to ensure that, you know, customers who were particularly vulnerable and got the additional support that they needed. Um, we've continued to work with all of our partners, um, to manage continuing sort of changing customer base, because obviously as more and more people have been claiming universal credit, the, the needs and demands have, have changed sort of completely. Um, so we've used what we term our flexible support fund, um, to actually purchase additional provision and that's included. And su- support for those with addiction issues, mental health difficulties, provision for graduates. We've just put in place provision for what we term professional and executive, um, sort of, um, employment. And so again, all of that, um, we, we've also put in provision to help people from, um, day one of unemployment and again at thirteen weeks, um, through one of our providers, Reed. And those programs have seen significant, um, takeups, um, along with our employment based, um, programs like the, the sector based work academies, which links training with employment. Um, we've had tremendous success, um, from, from all of that. So that's kind of one of the things that's illustrated for us is that whilst we need to ensure that people are supported effectively through all this in terms of, um, benefit and not putting any pressure on people to, to actually look for work when they're not in a position to. There are an awful lot of people who want and need to work. So it's been about balancing, um, all of that to ensure that we provide the support for people who need it. But, but actually there are still employment opportunities, um, for people who are able and want to work. And we've seen a significant increase in the number of people who've sort of been changing direction just to kind of sort of pr- provide a reasonable income for, for them and their families. Um, we've continued with the co-location work, um, with, um, our housing Leeds colleagues. Um, something that we implemented quite a while ago with the introduction of universal credit. Um, um, where we initially had people seconded from the team, sort of working alongside our work coaches to provide advice and support around housing issues, to help actually speed up the, um, the, the timeframe of processing the claim and ensuring that we got payment to, to people, um, correctly. Um, and that has continued with, with, um, sort of tele- telephone approach. Um, and has been really well received, um, in, internally and, and by, um, claimants alike. We've, um, improved the escalation process because obviously with the number of people actually making claims to benefit, the number of inquiries we receive from partner organisations in terms of can you help this person with their benefit, having problems, I can't get through to universal credit, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so we've, we've enhanced the process and ensured that within the partnership team, we've had sort of resource available to be able to, to manage the inquiries, to get quick responses and get people's, um, payments into play. And again, it's kind of testament to, to all of the support that's being delivered across the city that during all of this time, we have still been able to pay between ninety two and a hundred percent of, of everybody their full benefit at the end of their first month and, you know, and continuing on from there. So whi- which is, as I say, is a mass- massive effort, given the numbers of people that have, have actually making, um, claims to benefit. So just kind of finally, it's a sort of personal thank you, um, from me to, to all of the partners for all of the support that they've given to, to D W P during this time. Okay, um, I think I'll probably hand over to Kevin now.
Yeah, thanks, Simon.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Simon. Okay, so I think similar to, as been outlined for the city, we saw a large increase in the number of tenants who were moving on to universal credit. Uh, and this was particularly true at the start of the pandemic through late March, April and May, where we saw dramatic, uh, increase in numbers of tenants, uh, moving to U C. Uh, we've continued to see, uh, tenants moving over since those, but the, the numbers have moderated to much more typical numbers or even slightly below average numbers since then. The overall effect of that is that by, uh, September, the end of September twenty twenty, um, thirteen thousand five hundred and four housing leads tenants had moved on to U C. And as Simon was saying, we've, um, we've been working very closely with, uh, D W P. Uh, I'd reiterate what he said in those co-location arrangements, um, which where we'd had some of our, our enhanced income officers working for part of the week in D W P offices had really allowed us to establish very strong relationships. We've got a very strong relationship with Simon himself. And, uh, we were able to use this through the early part of the pandemic when, as well as having a lot, a lot of people moving to claims, there were a lot of new questions that they were asking. So people were asking, um, us questions about how they access, um, U C and other benefits. When the normal ways of working weren't in place anymore, they were, um, asking us how universal credit and other benefits um, relate to furlough payments and to help self-employed. And these things all were moving very quickly at a time when we were establishing our service from home working. So we set up, uh, with D W P, um, ongoing liaison where we were taking those queries that our frontline officers were encountering, those new queries, those different things, passing them to Simon. He was then actually working with his colleagues to get very quick turnaround on those answers. And then we were sharing those, uh, those best practice answers back to not only the staff who had raised them, but all our frontline staff, so that anyone who was asking us these new questions was getting the best uh, possible response as quickly as possible. Uh, and as we've reported into previous meetings, we take a, a very supportive preventative approach to our tenants who are moving to U C. We have a service offer that's based around, uh, three standards of service. Um, and that, um, what we sought to do was very quickly move our service to homeworking so that we were able to, um, provide those services by telephone or by, uh, online, depending on, um, the needs of the tenant. And I think what, uh, we're really pleased to be able to say is that despite that huge increase in numbers, despite all the increases in new questions and different situations, we were able to maintain our service offer to all tenants through the pandemic. So if we could move to the next slide please. Thank you. We've also seen D W P listening to the concerns of ourselves and all the landlords, um, in recent months. Managed payment to landlord, uh, M T P L is, um, i- is situation where instead of as the, as is the default payment is made to the tenants. In certain circumstances where they've got arrears or whether they're, or where they're vulnerable and payment direct to the tenant wouldn't be suitable, we can request payment direct to us as the landlord. And since the introduction of U C, these payments would have been deducted from the tenant and then collected together, uh, as a batch and paid to us every four weeks. The impact of that being that the tenant would have, there'd be a gap between when the money was, was deducted from the tenant's benefit and when it got to their rent account, thereby creating what are known as technical arrears where it makes, though in effect it's been paid by the tenant, but it's not shown on the rent account. And these, these would be for a number of weeks, which obviously is, creates extra work for housing teams who happen to monitor those accounts. Uh, and also causes, I think, some distress for tenants who know they've paid their rent, but seeing that they're, they've got arrears accruing on their account through no fault of their own. And D W P have listened to this, uh, and have introduced in recent months, uh, an excellent new approach, which now means that we receive the payment of a tenant's rent if there's a managed pa- managed, um, payment to landlord in place at the same time as they would have received their own benefit. Uh, and this is a fantastic improvement. And to support this, D W P have also, um, introduced new information on the landlord portal that lets us know how much is, uh, going to be paid and how much has been paid, which allows us to work closely with those tenants, um, to give them more information about what is going to be paid on their next payments and making sure that they're fully aware of their position in relation to their rent. Um, one of the key measures we look at in terms of how universal credit is affecting us as a service and how it's affecting our tenants and how we can measure whether the support we're providing to them has been effective is to look at the difference between the arrears that tenants had at the start of their universal credit claim and the level of arrears they have at a point in time. Um, and at the end of September twenty twenty, for those thirteen thousand five hundred and four tenants who've moved to U C, um, the arrears that increased on average by nineteen pound per tenant, which I think we feel is a very positive position. Obviously nineteen pounds across thirteen thousand people is still a large amount of money. So there is an impact of around two hundred and fifty nine K as at the end of September twenty twenty. And we've continued to see a pattern where, when a tenant moves on to, uh, universal credit in the short term, there is, uh, an increase in, uh, in arrears. And I think this is, is a reflection of the fact that there is a delay from when they make their claim to when they receive their first payment. But then as, um, the U C payment becomes established and either they get into a pattern of regular payment or alternatively we get a managed payment to landlord or rapper, we start to see, uh, arrears increasing. And I think one trend we have seen as well is that, which I think reflects the degree of pressure that, uh, our tenants have been under during the pandemic is that, uh, we have seen an increase in the number of, um, managed payment to landlords that we've requested. So at the end, uh, as of October twenty twenty, six thousand three hundred and sixteen tenants, uh, who were on U C with a managed payment to landlord, which is forty six point seven seven percent of all U C claims. Uh, thank you for that and I'll hand over to, uh, Diane.
Thanks, Kevin. Hello. All right, um, shall I start this next section?
Yes, please, Diane.
Uh, so as, as has been outlined, and I'm sure everyone's, uh, is, is obviously aware now that the last year has seen more and more pressure being put on people on lower incomes and the most vulnerable, uh, people in our communities. Um, we've seen obviously massive increases in people claiming universal credits, which is reflected in the inquiries that, that we're receiving. Um, through the, um, help, helps a claim project with Chapel Town Citizens Advice. We've helped nearly six thousand people, uh, assisted nearly six thousand people with their universal credit claims. Um, we've also seen, uh, significant increases obviously to employment and housing inquiries as, as you again might, might predict. The situation with housing, um, we expect is going to get worse, obviously in coming months as the moratorium um, on evictions is, is going to be withdrawn. And increasingly people who have what we refer to as negative budgets, whose income just does not cover their basic living costs. And that's a trend we've seen for a while, but obviously the last year that's been really exacerbated significantly. Um, which presents difficulties in terms of providing people with debt advice, because if people have no money to, to make repayments, then you know, finding a solution for people in that, in that situation is extremely difficult. We've talked about the partnership approach, which obviously has, has been critical to, to getting the, the right help to people. Um, and the response from the D W P, you know, has, has been fantastic and actually getting money into people's pockets has been a great, a great response. Um, I think it's at national level where we continue to have, um, perhaps concerns about policy, um, decisions, which going on to the next slide, um, in particular, the five week wait is, is, is obviously continues to be a key problem for people. Um, the uplift that's been applied to universal credit has been an absolutely essential lifeline for people. Um, and that is due to come to an end in a few months' time. So we and other partners nationally are campaigning for that, for that to be extended. Um, and when in fact it's pretty, pretty major permanent increase. Um, some of the national research we've seen is that seventy five percent of universal credit claimants would be in a negative budget without that uplift. Um, and I've just contacted Leeds MPs with some data on this, which, um, suggests that over a year, that uplift is, it brings in about sixty nine million pounds a year to claimants in Leeds. So if that's withdrawn, it will have a significant impact for universal credit claimants in Leeds and for the, for the city. Um, obviously there are concerns about lack of, of access for more vulnerable clients with face to face services being closed. Um, essentially when our, our face to face services have been closed, um, since March last year and we moved overnight essentially to providing telephone and digital, um, assistance exclusively, which has worked really well to be fair. And I'm, I'm, I'm pleased in terms of our client data that we are seeing black and Asian and minority ethnic clients. Um, you know, proportions of, of clients haven't fallen overall and disabled clients as well remain very high. Nearly half of all our clients are disabled or have a long-term health issue. As part of that, we've seen an increase in clients with reporting mental health issues um, and an increase in, in inquiries from families with dependent children, again, as I'm sure we'd all expect. We've seen people presenting with more inquiries, so debt and employment and housing, multiple inquiries that people have tried to cope with and struggling with. Um, and although it doesn't maybe show up massively in terms of statistics, but issues around relationship breakdown and again, the stresses that everybody's under in, in the current circumstances leading to more abuse unfortunately, um, and, and relationship breakdown. And I think, you know, other partners have spoken about this as well in terms of increasing numbers of safeguarding issues coming out in, in the advice conversations. Simon referred to the severe disability premium gateway, which Simon referred to the severe disability premium gateway, which is coming to an end on the twenty seventh of January. That is something that's mentioned that people claiming severe disability or relatable for the severe disability premium have not been able to move on to universal credits because they would be likely to see a quite a big drop in their income in moving on to universal credit. So that is a concern if that if that goes ahead on twenty seventh of January, because potentially we could see disabled people losing significant amount of income if they move on to universal credit without getting proper advice around that. And obviously, the interventions such as the further scheme forbearance in the benefit system and so on have been absolutely critical in helping people just keep their heads above water. And as they are removed, obviously, we have concerns about what's going to happen in the coming months. Just in terms of the stats, so pictorial version of of the what I've just been speaking about. We did see in quarter one, particularly, we saw a decline in people coming forward with debt inquiries. At that point, people were just had their heads down and, you know, their main concern was getting income in. But since then, since quarter two, that's been steadily increasing in terms of debt inquiries coming forward. And the Money and Pension Service are projecting a sixty percent increase in debt problems in the country over the next twelve to eighteen months. And just finally, the couple of examples which are both relating to deductions from universal credit, which is one of the big issues that we have concerns about. One example of a client who's having nearly half of her income reduced through deductions, which really leaves her with not enough money to live on. And the second example where somebody is having deductions because she got into arrears on rent and council tax. But now because she has reduced income, she's now getting into arrears with fuel and water bills. So, you know, just showing the kind of the the circle of debts that people get trapped into. So I think pushing for the uplift of universal credit is really critical at this point. Certainly, as I say, with other partners, that's something that we're we're pushing for at the moment. Okay.
Thanks, Diane. Okay, so just just in terms of the presentation, in terms just some of the key conclusions, and obviously, everyone's expressed the sort of partnership and longstanding relationships and how invaluable that that has been and continues to be. And obviously, a key issue around the twenty pound uplift per week. And that's stopping at the end of the end of March, the benefit that that's had. And also the desire to see that continue. Equally, the impact of the suspensions of of deductions will clearly start to to hit homes. And I think the point, the general point is obviously that leniency has been beneficial and well received during the during the pandemic. And I think Diane's quote, you know, about the seventy five percent would be in negative position, should that the twenty pound uplift disappear is a is a key one. So in terms of some of those key issues, obviously, there's key issues around capacity to access benefits. And that's around the digital work and, you know, digital inclusion. And obviously, we continue to work on that. There were five weeks wait for payment is is something that's highlighted often as something that needs to 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 potentially be looked at. The need for wider support is increasing. Diane's point about, you know, people, people demonstrating with more than one or two issues now is key. And something that is going to go on, claimants have fluctuating financial circumstances due to COVID, fellow change now as contracts, et cetera, that's an issue that needs to be monitored and and addressed because that is going to have an impact. And the last one is more a general point. And that's not necessarily a link to the current position, but something that's been going is about claim it's been wrongly advised to claim U C rather than stay rather than legacy benefits and the impact that that can that can have. So obviously, the report that we've provided provides a lot more detail than than this. And hopefully, this presentation has covered the the main ground. But in handing back to you, Chair, I don't know if you want to offer offer Sylvia and Saleem and Chris the opportunity to come in as well.
Oh, yeah. If you can give us the screen back.
I will stop sharing the screen.
Okay, right. Before bringing in the money buddies. Counselor Sharp, can you introduce the money buddies? Because it was with working with yourself that we decided on the money buddies. So do you want to introduce who they are and how what work you've been doing with them and the added value that they give?
Hi, sorry about that. Money Buddies, actually, I've worked with in my role working in the constituency office, in the East Leeds constituency office. And they're invaluable in advice and assistance in relation to debt issues. I'm just sorry, I didn't make a note of the I've scribbled down who we've got.
We've got Saleem.
Sorry.
Simpson.
Yeah, the the Saleem works in the Bermentoff's Ward. So I'm not familiar with Saleem because, of course, working in East Leeds. It's it's a different ward, it's not in our constituency. So I'm not familiar, sorry.
I was just wanting to recognize it was you that, you know, came up with the suggestion of using them and
Yes.
You know, no, that's fine, because in the pre meeting, councillor Khan gave a going reference about how much work had been done. So Saleem and Sylvia, want to just, yes.
If you're happy, I can say a few words. Just follow on from councillor Sharp. Sylvia and Saleem are based, they've East Leeds Debt Forum and Money Buddies. And as I said early on, they are, the organisation is based in Bermentoff Richmond Hill Ward. And it's a fantastic organisation and it has helped massively to local residents in Bermentoff Richmond Hill, East Leeds and across the city of Leeds. The Money Buddy has been a fantastic initiative and he has trained quite a few volunteers across the city and they do advise people how to manage your money. And they have won a national award as well. And I just want to say massive thank you to Sylvia and Saleem and their team as well, Chair.
Right, so either either or both of you, you've heard what the officers and the other contributions that have been said. Is there anything as any headlines that you would like to bring to the attention of the switching board before we go into detailed questions?
I think the the only thing, if it's okay with you, Saleem, the only thing that I would say is that the partnership working that we have done with the councillors and the other organisations in Leeds has been absolutely invaluable. And if I can just give you just one example very quickly. We had one client where we worked with a councillor, we worked with Housing Leeds, we worked with another service called Gipsil, we worked with adult so social services, we worked with D W P, the food banks, Green Doctor, the money buddies referred them to a debt advisor for specialist debt advice. We referred them to the benefit buddy service that we've got for help with the benefit claims for the for the PIP claim. And we work with the financial inclusion team as well overseeing that. So the partnership working that we do has been invaluable and absolutely brilliant. You know, with there's been no barriers at all. And I think I think that, you know, we need to showcase that a little bit. But yes, you know, first point of call, money bodies, we spread them across Leeds. And and they'll help people maximize that income, they can come and see as people can come and see as many times as I like. You know, so and we will now provide emergency emergency debt advice.
Right, Saleem, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, thank you. Something Diane mentioned in in the presentation around the number of these clients have, and I think we can't underestimate the complexity of dealing with those cases as we move forward in twenty twenty one. It's going to be muddy of waters, unfortunately. I'm not quite sure what creditors, what the private creditors actually is going to be technically going to be like. We we know the pressures on people's mental health. It's almost like the extreme cases are becoming the norm. And I think we need to be funded and provisioned to ensure that we can support the numbers of clients because that will increase in the next over this year. Interestingly, we found that we saw less clients last year for that, as you'd expected. But the level of debt that we actually help clients with was twenty percent greater, but eighty percent compared to twenty nineteen. So this is if you could jump to the level of debt, and that's the early days of debt collection and all the actors that come around it. So that continued support, which is very much appreciated for the whole sector from the council. Our partnership working and the forward thinking the council take several years ago to integrate the partners has really started to come to fruition, particularly at the times of greatest need. And I know that we can't allow that to to slip in in this next year. And I know there can be great challenges to do that as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Right, so we'll go to questions now. So if you can indicate by using either the blue or the yellow hand, or if it's not working, just give me a hand signal and I'll try and pick it up. So I noticed councillor Brooks first, then I've got councillor Khan and then councillor Bentley. So councillor Brooks first, please.
Thank you, Chair. So the the five week wait for payment is obviously a structural issue that is built into the universal credit system. And it, I mean, it we as a council do seem to be doing very, very good work around like lessening that. But we're also, it it seems to me, using quite a lot of resources trying to lessen that. And I was just wondering what if there's been any word on from government with regards to reducing that, especially over over the course of the pandemic, due to due to the impact that it's having, like the negative impacts that it's having on on people's long term finances, mental health and everything else.
Right, is that one for either Simon or Rebecca?
I don't mind.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I can pick that up if you want. I mean, there there isn't any proposals at the moment to reduce that sort of number, number of weeks that the the customer has to want. But obviously, once the the customer has actually made the claim to benefit, we can actually then look at an advance of benefit for for the individual, which will obviously help them to sort of tide over till they get the first payment through. There is also the facility, once the claim has been established, for the person to be paid more frequently. So they can be paid every two weeks instead of every four weeks, which obviously helps them to to manage the money as well. So there are there are options available for people.
Okay, now I'm conscious that Chris Smythe needs to leave the meeting soon. So can I invite Chris Smythe to make a contribution? And any thoughts that he's got, because he does have to go. Chris is in charge of the Leeds Credit Union.
Okay, thank you, councillor. So as Lee said, we we've managed to continue our face to face payments in four of the branches across the city right throughout this difficult time, and and that's still the case now. And 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 actually, during April to June, we issued three million pounds over the counter to to our members. And all and that also included a quite a large increase in the emergency welfare payments that Lee was talking about earlier. So so we've we've continued services. We we also introduced a new banking app in the middle of the year to help members access their money without having to come into the branches, and that's gone down extremely well. And and that added to the the Visa card that we already had, that was also available to members to help access cash. And so we've we've kept all of our services going and and indeed, you know, assisted the council. So for example, we helped Lee on the the new bereavement scheme that he mentioned earlier as as well. One of the surprising consequences that we didn't expect is that our members' savings, the deposits have gone up to a record high. So we now have twenty three million of people's deposits in the credit union. And that kind of sounds good, except it is it is a liability on our balance sheet. So it does give us a bit of strain. But but the more important point, I think, and I've talked to Lee and James about this, is is that money is available to get out into the community if we can work out how to do it. You know, so more more effectively, obviously, on affordable credit if we can. And so I thought so I think those are the highlights for ourselves, councillor.
Thank you very much, thank you. So I've got councillor Khan, councillor Bentley, then councillor Sharp. The councillor Khan first, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Lee, for excellent report and presentation. My first question is on COVID nineteen health line. I know it expired on the September. And then you said people still can ring in and they will be able to signpost it to community hubs. Is that service available on the weekend, is it, or is it just Monday to Friday? And also on page thirty nine, there's a graph of universal credit. But on the graph, it just says percentages. I think it would be really nice in future if you could have figures as well, so we can compare what is seven percentage of what figure wise. At the moment, it just gives you percentages. So that's one question. And also to Simon, Simon, could you just explore a little bit on the role of work coaches, please?
Okay, so Lee, do you want to take the first one? And then I'll pass to Simon for the second one.
Yeah. So in terms of the percent, the actual numbers on the graphs, we'll put both on, obviously, in in future. We'll pick that pick that up. In terms of the weekend working, currently, the the phone line LWSS doesn't work at the weekend, although the a number of the volunteer hubs do work at the weekend. So we did do seven day working at the beginning of the pandemic. But we found that the numbers did drop off quite significantly towards the end of the sort of beginning of the summer time. So we haven't, we don't provide that a a weekend as a service. Obviously, we work up through to a Friday. We did look at reintroducing it in November, certainly for a Saturday. And we did do it to start with, but the numbers were really small, if I'm if I'm honest, in terms of using that number. So we haven't reintroduced it. And currently, we're not, we're not seeing any feedback, certainly through the the hub. We have a fortnightly meeting with all the hubs to pick up any issues, and that's certainly not coming through with an issue from them at the moment.
Right, I'll bring councillor Khan back in again in a minute. Simon, do you want to cover question two, please?
Yes, sorry, my reception is not brilliant, but what's the question around the role of the work coach?
Councillor Khan, do you want to clarify?
Yes, Simon, can you just explore what is the role of a work coaches, please? As you say, you're going to be increasing those work coaches as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, they they are really kind of the the frontline support to help the customers when once they've actually made their claim to benefit. And so each customer is is seen individually and allocated a work coach for the life of their claim. And then they will work with that individual in terms of helping them to to move closer and into employment. So they would draw up what's termed a employment commitment, which is the steps that the individual is actually going to take towards and progressing towards employment. And then regularly review that. They would be responsible for identifying any training opportunities that might be suitable, any employment opportunities that might be suitable, helping people to overcome barriers. So for example, if they've got an opportunity for a job, but they need a new suit or a new pair of boots, we can use the flexible support fund to pay for that to actually get that person into work. And we'll help them to sort of sustain their employment as as well, once they're in work. So they basically sort of provide sort of ongoing support for for anybody who actually makes a claim to benefit. If individuals don't gel with that particular work coach and they need to change that, that's, you know, perfectly possible. We can arrange that, no problem at all, but hopefully. We, we can arrange that no problem at all, but hopefully it's about sort of building up trust relationship and understanding and and helping to get that customer um where they need to be. It's not always about work, obviously. It, it could just be around um support and help with the benefits, depending on the, the, the situation, the individual. But, you know, it's about providing that support and or um employment advice guidance um and um help, you know, for that individual customer.
Okay, councillor Khan, do you want? Councillor Khan, do you want to come back in again?
No, Chair, thank you.
Okay. Right, I've got councillor Bentley, then councillor Sharp, then councillor Blackburn. So first councillor Bentley, please.
Thank you, Chair, and can I just uh say again, uh as my colleagues have the, you know, the uh say thank you to everybody that's been working so hard on this. I've just got some comments really. A question may emerge, I don't know. And someone may, may, may want to, 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 to comment on my comments. But I, I, I think what's important, and it came out in a number of the, number of the presentations, is about the recovery after we've got through this, this crisis, assuming we do, and that, that, that's make the assumption that we do. Um and I, I think the worry is that once the immediate crisis has stopped and we don't have the, the level of hospitalisation and deaths and the, the, the virus has stopped spreading, that the central focus from government may just move on somewhere else. But the, but the um effects of it will, will last in our communities for some time. And when things like the moratorium on evictions uh finishes and sanctions have started to be put into D W P, et cetera, um we, we're going to have a um we, we, we're still going to have the, 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 the long term problems, and it's just really um seeing how we approach that. And I think it was something that Diane from C A B touched on significantly. Um and I think the other, the other comment I really wanted to make was um well, ju- just of money buddies as well, I just want to say, we, we're using those in our award for this very reason, to try to get people who are suffering at the moment into um good financial habits, and, and money buddies have been um excellent on that. And I think they've probably been helping in your award as well, Chair, because they're based, we, we had them based at Opal, so there may have been some overlap there. Um the other, the, the, the other point uh I just wanted to make is the big increase in people taking up um uh universal credit. And I've noticed this in my ward and, and perhaps some of the other outlying wards, where a lot of people who are not familiar with the benefit system, for the first, this is their first time they've come into the benefit system. And with all due respect to Simon, it's not an easy thing to navigate your, your, your way around if you're not, if you, if you're not familiar with it. Um and I think getting help into there, because we have a lot of help and support for people in the inner cities areas, people where we, we've traditionally had high levels of people on universal credit and, and other state benefits. Um but I think we just need to see how we're replicating that help into areas uh where people, it, it's new to people. And we have got a bit of a, a two stage, a two, two phase city, because it's interesting that, that, what um the credit union is saying. One, one side of the city, we've got big increase in savings, and I think lots of people are experiencing, oh, I'm spending less money, but I'm still getting my income, et cetera, so I can save. And on the other side, we're getting people in severe debt, and we, we've got to recognise that as well. So a few comments, Chair, that's all. But I think an excellent report. Uh and I think it reflects so well on the city uh what, what we are doing and the way that the council and all our partners and across the, the political spectrum working together uh for our communities. And I think it's a, a great example. I'd like to thank everyone for that. Thank you, Chair.
Does anybody want to respond to anything that councillor Bentley said, or just go on to the next question? Right, so uh the next one is councillor Sharp, then I've got councillor Blackburn, then councillor Smith, then councillor Harland. So councillor Sharp, please.
Thanks, Chair. Uh just a quick question to Simon. Um you said that there was, there's temporary suspension of universal uh credit, some sanctions on universal credit. Can you just elaborate on that a bit, please?
Um yeah, there, there were um temporary um suspensions on um re- recovery of um overpayments and deductions, but they, they are now um back in place. So we are um actually sort of recovering um over, overpayments and third party deductions where, where they were in place. And with regard to um sanctions, I really don't want people to get hung up on these because we, we really only actually apply sanctions in a very, 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 very small number of, of cases. And that would only be where the customer is not employed, you know, with, with their claimant commitment. Despite um a lot, a lot of support and a lot of sort of clarification. And ev- every case that actually then goes up actually is referred through to the managers first of all, for them to review the case, to actually see if it's appropriate, to ensure that we've taken all the right steps. And we've done all the right engagement with the individual to, to try and to ensure that they've actually done what they needed, needed to do. Um it's a two way communication, and, you know, we would only refer anybody for a possible sanction if it was, you know, absolutely necessary, if we've sort of gone to the nth degree, which I'm sure Becky would sort of endorse. Um our approach.
Hi, yeah, just, just to reiterate what Simon said, a hundred percent, there is such a strict process in place at the moment. Um uh you know, it goes, goes all the way to senior leaders before it even be considered. And I think just to put that number into context, across from Yorkshire, there hasn't been one sanction that's been referred um or even considered for sanctioning during the whole of this pandemic since March.
Okay, right, Nicole, do you want to come back in again?
No, thanks, Chair.
Okay, uh so councillor Blackburn, then councillor Smith, then councillor Harland. So councillor Blackburn first, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The matter of sanctions has just been touched on. And it did come out up in the council meeting yesterday to do with one of the white papers. Um I'm just interested to know how many sanctions we have in Leeds at the moment. I've noticed what's just been said. Uh but I'd just like to know a little bit of background to it. I do accept you say that you do these checks, et cetera. Um but it does concern me that we should be sanctioning at all while all this is on, you know, and why are we sanctioning? Uh is any of it because people aren't going for job interviews? And do we check into it if people have got the uh information to go on these job interviews, sort of winding back? I had one man that sort of uh had well, he was being sanctioned. I'm going back quite a while now. And they wanted to sanction him because he didn't turn up, and it turned out that the letter to go for this interview was going to his previous address in Scarborough. So I didn't know anything about it. And you know, that, that wasn't so it I got involved. So, you know, you can't find this, this, these things happening. I'm just not very comfortable with the fact. I mean, we, we, we all know that people do better than others in getting to interviews and et cetera. Uh but I'm uncomfortable with the fact that we're doing that in this period. Thank you.
Okay, so it's sort of, I mean, either Simon or Rebecca, instead of talking about the specifics, what about the generality? Is there anything you can add or anything you can say to councillor Blackburn to reassure her?
Simon, I don't mind picking this one up. Certainly can. I think the most important message that we really need to get out there is, as councillor has just mentioned, that there may be the odd ones that slip through the crack. And if they do, then the most important thing, as soon as they contact us and reengage, we can definitely rectify any individual cases that may have slipped through. But I think a really important message that I'm sure Simon will have mentioned, or if not, we have recently appointed across the whole of the country, which obviously impacts within Leeds as well, our own safeguarding senior leader to ensure that anybody who is vulnerable, anybody who is slipping through the cracks, that they are brought to the safeguarding leader's attention, and safeguarding is our absolute priority. Now, this has been a recent post. Um I think it's been in place now for the last six months or so. But it isn't just a pandemic approach, it is a moving forward permanent post. So safeguarding is our absolute priority, which would hopefully reassure councillor that that is genuinely our intention. It is an absolute last resort. And I think the messages that we're constantly getting out there amongst our partners via the social justice team, via whatever partners Simon's engaging with heavily, is contact us because we will be able to rectify it via the work coach. Via whatever means that customer needs to do, we will a hundred percent rectify wherever we can, anybody that has slipped through the net.
Okay, thank you. Uh councillor Smith and then councillor Harland. Councillor Smith.
Oh, thank you, yeah. Um so a great report. Thank you to, to everybody. This is an absolutely um vital piece of work. And um it's probably the key thing for people's lives, as, as we know. If you, if you have no income or limited income, or your income changes, um it can push you into an awful spiral of uh, uh, of debt, mental health and, and everything else, as we know. So, you know, this is absolutely vital. Uh I'm really pleased to see the future um working of shared resources and things like that. Um I hope to see that, that, that's continuing um as we come out of this pandemic to, to try and um help as many people as we can as quickly as we can. And I do think that speed is the essence. Um we, we, you know, we've talked around um sanctions. And I've had a couple of instances where people have come to me and they've been sanctioned because they haven't responded to a letter or a telephone call. Um you know, I understand that people need to engage, but, but surely we need to find out why they haven't responded. Again, has it come down to the information's gone to, the, the initial contact's gone to a, a wrong address? Have they got the up to date information for the, for the client, et cetera, et cetera? And I think all of these things need to be looked at. I know that the volumes that you're pushing through are phenomenal, and somebody is always going to slip through a net. But, you know, we just need to probably have a little bit more empathy there sometimes. Um going back to Money Buddies, I work with Sylvia. We fund her through our outer uh west committee, uh community committee. Brilliant piece of work that she does for us in Putsey. Thank you, and thank you to the team. Um leading on to Jonathan's question, Jonathan Bentley's question about um people who aren't necessarily always um able to navigate the system. I know that I've spoken to Sylvia in the past about creating um some kind of easy to read one page flow sheet. Um and I'd like to think that at some point we'll get to a, a place where we can pick that up and, and collaborate on that, Sylvia. Um so really, I think, you know, some exemplary work being done right across the city by so many agencies. I'm very, very grateful in my own ward. Um I know you've helped an awful lot of, of my own residents, and thank you for that. And a, a, as I say, I'd just like to see all of this partnership working carry on um as we emerge from this pandemic and really try and get to grips of the root causes of, of what's going on. So thank you all very much.
Right, before bringing in councillor Harland, councillor Sharp, you asked for details. Was it the details of Rebecca that you were looking for?
No, sorry, Chair, the uh person for the D W P that's going to be appointed.
Ah, right, so the person that's going, right. So Rebecca, when you do appoint that person, are you going to make, how are you going to make their, them public? How are you, how are you going to make that public so that people like councillor Sharp can contact them?
So is this in regards to the safeguarding expert that I've already referred to, sorry, in the earlier answer? Yes, that person is already in post and has been for six months and is already establishing the links. And so that is something that Simon and I can take away from this, certainly. And but the links have already started to be made through quite a few of our organisations. And but yes, I'll set that as an action point and establish how it's going to branch out more local.
Because councillor Sharp, as well as being a councillor, also works in uh the MP for Leeds East's office as well. So she's probably dual hatted in asking her questions just now. One is her own constituents, but secondly, in terms of the wider area, in order to give support to the MP she works for. That's where it comes in.
Yeah, and that's absolutely fine. And I guess realistically, this is why I'm a little bit hesitant at the moment. I'm certainly not against it, but the majority of those queries that come in via the MP's office are cascaded out to the safeguarding lead as, as business as usual for us. So I don't want to go out and change the already established route until I've confirmed that.
Okay, that's fine, no, that's point taken right. Sorry, councillor Harland.
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment really, um despite the reluctance of opposition members to pay tribute at full council yesterday, I'd just like to say how proud I am of the way that this administration has led and reacted during this pandemic. And I'd like to say thanks for councillor Cooper's leadership, to James and his team uh for stepping up over and above our partners across the city and all other elected members who've really shown the, the colours this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just comment on that? There are, I mean, I was one of the people who was speaking on the debate yesterday. It was based on a comment at Whip's that where councillor Dowson says, can we all stop congratulating everybody and actually say something at the, at the meeting? So I chose just to make reference to the first part of it, but I would endorse what has been said. Look, we've, we've come together as a council, we have worked hard, everybody has done. I don't think there's, you know, okay, there will be, somebody will come up with any, an exception. But I would argue that everybody in the council, officer, an elected member, have all done everything they possibly can to the maximum way to help everybody to do things. And if it wasn't mentioned yesterday, there's no slight mention against anybody. It was based on a comment by the chief whip that can we stop congratulating everybody and actually leave time so that people can make contributions? And so that was the background behind it. But that, that explains that. But your, your point's well made, and I do not detract from it. So anybody got any other questions or queries they would like to raise? So in that case, uh there are some people who haven't yet had a chance to say anything. So I'm just going to ask them if they want to make any contributions. So Marilyn Bannister, you've not had an opportunity. Is there anything you would like to add or bring to uh our attention?
Hello, yes. I'm a service delivery manager at City Leeds. Um I'm heavily involved with the debt team, but with other teams as well. And I suppose what I'd like to say is that if we lose the twenty pounds a week on the universal credit, it is going to cause destitution. It's been mentioned already, but I think I just want to make that point again. People at the moment are, are not managing. If they lose the twenty pounds a week, they're definitely going to be in destitution. And anything you can do around lobbying on that would be gratefully received by citizens and vice and other agencies. And of course, the whole, the whole of the, the, the issue is really around poverty and people not having enough money. And we see the same thing with the food banks, a huge use of food banks and the Marcus Rashford campaign. If people had the money, we wouldn't have to put so many resources in place, which is what councillor Brooks, I think, was mentioning in her question. Um and people are given dignity and choice if they have the money. And they don't have that if they're required to go to a food bank because they just haven't got enough money to live on. So that would be the point I would make. Thank you.
To reassure you, as a result of the full council meeting yesterday, a white paper motion brought forward by councillor Cooper has asked our chief executive to write down, down on behalf of council. Uh there was a vote taken and councillor Cooper's motion was passed. And so, yes, there is going to be movement from the council through our chief executive is due to write down uh to ministers to make, to make the point. But at the end of the meeting, I'll be ringing councillor Cooper in to say a few words anyway, but just to reassure you that at council yesterday, that was approved. So uh going back up to the top of my list, Joe, I think Joe Rowland, is there anything you want to add?
No, no, I mean, just to reiterate, you know, the long partnership work, uh established partnership working in the city has been fundamental through this past sort of nearly, nearly a year now, hasn't it? And, and just thanks to everyone that's contributed to. And and just thanks to everyone that's contributed to the report and to all the work and over the past twelve months as well.
Uh, Mr Morgan, Nick Morgan, do you want to add anything?
I I I've just had something around recovery and what happens when we, hopefully the vaccination work and some things return to normal. But in terms of that recovery and indebtedness and the impact that will have on the mental health and wellbeing of the city. And I think that's something that we're already starting to look ahead on. But that's something that I think we should all be very concerned about.
Thank you. Right, Mr Rogers, does anything you want to add before I bring in councillor Cooper to make the final contribution?
No, thank you Chair. Um I think you've had a very comprehensive briefing on a very important issue for the city and the challenge that we face and the good work that's being progressed. But let's not underestimate the challenges that we're going to have going forward.
Okay, so councillor Cooper.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I just want to really reiterate what's been said throughout the meeting by many of the contributions. And that's around the work done in partnership in this city to actually help the people, the residents of this city and mitigate against the worst impact of um any policy that may be impacting on people's livelihoods and their financial situations and other situations as well, as Diane actually listed a number of other compounding issues that people are facing as well. Um, and I want to thank everybody that works in this field and in partnership with us as a local authority uh for all the work that they do on behalf of the residents of this city. Thank you so much. We do really appreciate it. And I know that finances are very difficult for a lot of organisations. Um, and I recognise the work that all these organisations are doing in the city. Um, and I'm just sorry that we are unable to to co-fund many of the work that's that you're doing as voluntary organisations. Uh, and it takes often councillors' discretionary funds of their ward-based money to keep these organisations going, such as Money Buddies, who, you know, some of the work that Money Buddies have been providing over a number of years is phenomenal, uh impact on a lot of people in our city who are desperate for that help and support. Uh, so I absolutely recognise the situation that people are, organisations are in around that type of funding. Uh, but I just also wanted to recognise all the work that you're all doing as well. And Simon and Rebecca, please don't take anything personally because I know how hard both of you work in this city to try and ensure that, you know, everybody is dealt with in a fair way, absolutely. My position is about the policy overall and it's nothing to do with you as as individuals carrying out the work that you have to uh that you have to carry out, I've got to say. So I think, I think that the uh the issue I have around the policy and particularly at the moment currently is that it works on an assumption that there's work and jobs out there. But during this pandemic, there isn't any work and jobs out there. That is why people are claiming universal credit. Because they've actually been made redundant, they've lost their jobs, they've not, you know. So so the the assumption that people are coming to claim universal credit because, you know, there's work out there and we can help them get that work through work coaches uh just doesn't work in this emergency situation, I've got to say. It may well in the recovery stage, and I accept that, but I think currently, the way that it's it's set up the policy, um it's just not working in the in the current circumstances for that, for that reason. Uh, I've got to say, because there are no jobs out there for people to go to, um you know. And and really, um councillor Bentley highlighted the dichotomy within the city. Because those people of us that are continuing to work actually can't get out to spend any money. So we can't go on holiday, we can't go to certain shops. And so, of course, savings are increasing because people are still continuing to get their income, but you can't do a right lot with it, I've got to say at the minute. Um, you know, as we all know. Um, uh so, and and the other issues I've got with it, and I know, and I don't intend to rehearse, uh you know, the uh the arguments from yesterday at full council at all. And more in general, we are more inclined to work together as political parties to make sure that we get the best out of the city, I've got to say. Uh, so, but I do have some issues that I do want to raise. And one of them is the twenty-pound uplift. Um, and I think that because of the benefit freeze that they had on the, any rising benefits that's been um on for a number of years now, people were already on the back foot. So when the government gave the twenty-pound uplift, it was really welcome, really, twenty pounds was really welcome. But it's nowhere near enough as to where the benefit level should actually be. But it has provided somewhat of a lifeline to people and I don't want to see that disappear. I want to see that, you know, stay and become a permanent fixture uh for universal credit. I think the other, the other issue I have is still around the five-week wait because that also works on a presumption that somebody's got a month's salary in the bank and they can spend that while they wait for their uh claim to be approved and then they can have the money. And I know that Simon um and Rebecca have said about that actually you can ask for a, an early payment for that, but that has to be paid back at some stage. And while you are on a benefit income, it doesn't give you much leeway or wriggle room to pay back any arrears. So I think that that pushes people into a cycle of debt. Um, and and actually, what it does to them is make them become reliant on charity and also and sometimes on um high rates of lending from, uh you know, uh high street lenders or whoever they may need to lend the money from, just so they can manage to get through the five weeks and then pay whatever deductions they need to pay back, I think I've got to say. The number of people that are using food banks has just gone through the roof this year. Um, and I know that many people on the call are volunteers as well at their local food banks, cross-party. I know all that work is all all going on, um and cross-organisation, all that work's going on. So we've all seen it. You know, we've all seen people come through those doors who are desperate. And the look on their faces is enough to tell you, you know, that you wouldn't be walking through those doors asking for that charity and support if you weren't in desperate need. Um, you know, and I think that it's high time that we continue to lobby the government. And the government can change their mind on this. They have got time to make this a permanent feature. They have got time to change the five-week wait. They have got time to stop the deductions and any sanctions that might happen. And I just hope that that will happen in time to help all these people who are currently claiming universal credit in the city. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Everybody will be pleased to know, I don't mean that I'm not going to respond. My job is to chair this scrutiny board in an impartial and, you know, the other members can have the the political knockabout. So if I'm not responding, it's not that I've not got a response, it's just my role is to chair the meeting and not to have a rerun of yesterday afternoon. All, the only thing I would say is, I am assured that work is going on behind the scenes in terms of the budget that will be getting announced in March. And like any other budget announcement, we will have to wait and see what happens when the budget comes along in March. But, that said, can I thank everyone? Because there is no doubt that this city, I would argue, has led in a lot of the things that we have done. Um, I've attended one or two LGA seminars this year and some people have also participated. Some people have been presenting at them as well. So uh I do know what we're doing. I do know what other councils are doing as well. And you can all give yourself a proverbial pat on the back for the hard work that you're doing, working together. Look, this isn't easy. This isn't easy. Nobody wanted, you know, the pandemic was not of our making. The pandemic was of nobody's making. And so we're in, nobody, uh, everybody's too young on this call to even remember issues that were happening in the fifties and that. So uh, you know, it's, that was the last time we had a lot of these major problems. So thank you all for your efforts. Thank you as well. We will continue to monitor what's happening because particularly if we're starting to come out to the recovery stage. Because I think that that's when the real work will start as to how we move people on uh and understand what's happening. And because some of these temporary safety nets may not be there. So we may need to work hard at trying to get these things through. So thank you all for your time and effort. I did say I would allow it to go on longer if absolutely necessary. And I did feel that the debate was such that it was the work, the right thing to do for the citizens of Leeds so that people can see and hear what is happening. So thank you all for your time. And thank you for the members for your forbearance in me allowing this session to go on further than we anticipated. So with that said, thank you very much. And I'll now move on to item eight, which is the best council plan performance report. Um, now, uh, we have two new. Thank you. Two new people who are coming in. If they could just briefly introduce themselves, that's first of all councillor Rafik. If you could introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, thanks Chair. I'm the exec board member for environment and active lifestyles.
And uh, Mr Evans?
I'm the eleven, director of resources and housing.
And I noticed that Adam is pretty, like, so presumably Adam is going to be contributing. Adam, would you like to introduce yourself?
Good afternoon Chair, Adam Crampton, head of property management.
That's fine. So we've got before us, we've got the best council plan and we've got the performance report. Uh, members, you've had a chance to read both of these reports. Uh, have you any questions you would like to ask any of the officers or councillor Cooper or councillor Rafik in respect of their portfolios? So anybody get anything they would like to ask? Oh, someone's sending semaphore. Is that somebody's phone? Oh, I thought the Lord may have just come out to make some money there. But uh, no, anybody get any questions they would like to ask on this particular uh item? No, I can't see anybody, can't see any hands up and I can't see anybody waving or uh fists or anything up me. So on that basis, uh, we've been at, you know, we will note the information that's there. Uh, and thank again officers for the work that they are doing in order to keep the ship still going in terms of the normal standard work that we're having to do on a day-to-day basis as well. Particularly when it comes to housing. Uh, in the housing side, it's not been easy because for a while uh a lot of the work was curtailed because of uh Covid. But uh the housing officers have responded magnificently in trying to develop an online and a remote service. And, you know, the complaints that I get aren't about the service. It's about why's my work not being done quickly and why, why have I still got this leak? Which is something that I know the officers are working on. Councillor Smith, would you like to come in?
Apologies Chair, my, my little five-year-old neighbour just knocked the door. Out in the snow in his pyjamas because he wants to be. Um, so sorry about that. Um, yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm just querying about the, is there any chance of reintroducing free parking into the city centre? Given the, you know, the strain that the city centre businesses are under. And I know nobody can go out at the moment, so don't all sort of carry on with me. But when we can, when we are free to move around again, could we be giving that some consideration again, please? If possible, just, just to try our best to try and get that, that city centre back um to where, you know, we need it all, we all need it to be.
Uh, I don't know, I think that decision isn't actually anybody present here to actually make that final decision. I know that James Rogers and Neil have got views, but I don't think it falls to anyone to actually make the decision. They can be part of the discussion and same with the exec members. Uh, Neil, as the de facto senior person present, do you want to make any contribution in that respect?
Well, I think Jay, I'll defer to James actually on this one because he looks after the the service. And I, I think um they have developed a bit of a policy on it. And clearly, um, one factor which people need to beware of, given that we're going to go on to finances is that it also has an implication in that respect. But I think James can cover it off.
James?
Thanks Neil, thanks. Yeah, it does fall under my, my area and the councillor Rafik's portfolio. So it's something that we're, we're keeping under review. One of the main reasons why we introduced free parking back under the first lockdown was to do with essentially key workers and NHS staff and social care staff being able to undertake their duties, duties effectively. What we've introduced um since then is a permit scheme for essential frontline NHS and um social care staff. So they've still got free parking within the city centre, so that's, that's still in place. A number of factors um to take account um in terms of whether we do consider moving back to free parking for everybody. And I think the two, the two critical ones um are related to um impact upon the, the city centre last time. That we, we still saw congestion in the city centre, um even during lockdown. And particularly in terms of people using car parking spaces to keep the car there all day long, twenty-four hours a day. Um, and that was one of the main reasons why we still saw issues that we, that we needed to manage. And then the second issue is, is Neil covered, is that we've got significant financial challenges. And clearly, if we adopt free parking, then that will make those worse for the, for the coming months.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to come back in councillor Smith?
No, no Chair, I understand all of the reasoning um and behind it. And, you know, sadly, there will always be somebody who will take advantage of something like that. Um, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, of some form to regenerate the city centre, which is desperately needed. I mean, if we can't offer free parking, could we approach Wyka um to, to do free buses between certain hours of the day? I, I don't know. I'm just, just trying to think outside the box a little. Where we, 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 we limit our liability, yet try and increase the footfall and revenue into the shops in the centre.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. Councillor Green?
Thank you Chair. Well, perhaps I could encourage councillor Smith to think outside the box a little more broadly and also include the um car parking charges levied by the private sector. I can't really see that the city council, although I totally agree, it's a good point to raise. And compared to other areas, Leeds city centre car park charges are very high. But they're high in the private sector, if not higher than they are in local authority car parks. So if we, if we want to look at this in the round, um then that's a different aspect altogether. Because I do agree, there will come a time when businesses want us to go back into the city centre. And the way to attract us back is not to impose sky-high car parking charges.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, anybody get any other comments? In that case, can I thank the officers who have come along for this particular item? If we can now move on to the initial budget proposals. Now, we do have Michael Everett and Kevin Mulvaney. Uh, do you both want to introduce yourselves, please? Can we start with Michael?
Good afternoon Chair, good afternoon everybody else. I'm Michael Everett, head of finance for communities and environment.
And Kevin?
Good afternoon councillor Anderson, Kevin Mulvaney, head of finance, resources and housing.
Thank you. Right. So we've had the initial budget. Uh, now, actually, on my list here, it did say that councillor Lewis was going to be in. Is councillor Lewis actually in the call now or not on the list of potential attendees? Uh, no, it's okay. Right. Uh, we've got before us the budget papers that we've seen already. Uh, because to the best of my recollection, there is nothing new that came in the last exec board. The ones that were already there are the ones that are being presented to us. Um, I know that councillor Blackburn would like to ask a question around bowls.
Yes Chair, thank you. Um, I've been informed.
Um, I've been informed, um, by the, the veterans, uh, uh, bowls group. They're concerned, uh, about the statements of Get Set Leeds. Uh, which is to do with health. And they, they have sent me this about three paragraphs. Uh, but the concern that nothing's mentioned about bowls. Uh, as if people don't realise that of course that is something that. If you can't get around and play the most, more active sports, like football, et cetera. Um, the bowls is also something that is a healthy thing to do. And it should be recognised. And, uh, you know, I totally agree with them. And I would ask us to recognise that bowls is something that is very important. To a lot of older people, but, uh, all age groups. Uh, it is a sport, it's a competitive sport. Uh, hence my comments made at the last scrutiny where I, I don't think some people actually realise this. That they think if his foot places down, that people can still compete. Try, try doing that with all the football clubs and see what happens. Uh, but yes, I would ask you to, to think about that. And can we include bowls with that, please? Thank you.
Right. Uh, I accept that the consultation is still ongoing before either James or Mohammed, councillor Rafik say that. But, uh, James, do you want to, uh, respond or councillor Rafik to the points made by councillor Blackburn? I'm aware that the final decision will be made when the budget papers are prepared for February.
Thanks, Chair. I think you've probably said the majority of what I would have said there, that, yeah, clearly a final decision has not yet been taken. Uh, we are out for consultation on that particular proposal, which we're currently assessing. And the health and wellbeing issue has been addressed by a number of people who have responded to consultations. So that issue will be picked up in the, uh, the final work that we do.
If I could, uh, add, Chair, that happy to take on councillor Blackburn's suggestion, uh, that we should include. I mean, uh, in our, in our ambition for, to people to get out and exercise more and start moving, uh. And reduce in activity. And, and this is something, a piece of work we've been doing with the bowling associations over the years to get more people involved. And that's something I think we, we will continue to do that. It's not something we want to kind of just run down. We're quite, quite keen to make sure more people are engaged and involved in the sport.
Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chair. So it was just a comment really to everybody regarding the consultation. Um, we've received several complaints, um, about the wording of the consultation. Um, they've, our residents feel that a lot of the questions were very leading. Um, they could have done with, um, an alternative information slash other box. Um, and they also feel that, um, the, the, the significant number of, um. Data collecting information questions at the back, um, could be reduced. I think, um, certainly on, on a couple of, of very pertinent consultations, there were more questions on, um, who you were. Rather than what comments you'd like to make. Um, and that was, um, that, that was very strongly felt.
Okay, James?
Yeah, I think we, I mean, we do get comments back in terms of the, uh, the consultations that we design. And we get a nature of comments back and it's trying to get a consultation that's balanced. What we do try to include is sort of open comments boxes. So where people have got broader comments they wish to make. They can also make them and they are taken into account when we do the, uh, do the assessment.
Fine. Right. The fact, the, the question I've got is that since we last discussed the budget. Uh, I think the government have issued some further figures and as a result of that, the council have reflected. In their budget presentation to the exec board in December. Can either, uh, either Michael, Kevin or Neil just briefly outline for the benefit of the scrutiny board. The major changes that have come about as a result, uh, in terms of, for example, using reserves and other, uh, flexibilities. Can anybody just briefly outline the changes than the, than the last time we met?
Uh, yeah, yes, briefly. Uh, um, so the, the, the settlement, um, came, came through just before Christmas. Just for the, um, last executive board. Um, and it did reduce the gap. Um, by around about twenty-seven million, um, from where we were. Um, but one of the, so, so, um, but one of the issues in there, which we hadn't kind of, uh, taken into account. Was that the nine million of that or ten, ten million of that. It relates to the ability to raise a precept, uh, for social care by three percent. So, um, that, so it included within that twenty-seven million is actually something which we would, would have to then charge, um. Members of the public for, in, in effect. So, um, yeah, so that's, that's the overall position. In, in terms of the, 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 the broad, uh, way that we, we're seeking to, um, manage the budget overall. Um, there are, um, the, 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 the budget proposals, which are kind of, um, savings. Uh, which amount to in the region around about sixty, sixty-five million. And then, uh, what we are looking at then is a, a series of, uh, asset sales in particular. Uh, to, um, bridge then much of the gap, um, through, uh, to, to actually get us to a position where we can balance next year. Um, so the, the, we, we have a, we have a, we, we, we did present a bit of a shortfall. Um, in the budget last time, we've still a few million to, uh, deal with before the February budget. But we were nearly there. And obviously in a considerably better position than we were back in. You know, July, August, when we were starting to kind of contemplate how we were going to balance the budget at that point.
That's fine. Right. Uh, having heard what, uh, Mr Evans has just said, does anybody get any questions or any comments they would like to make? Um, if not, uh, can I thank again everybody, uh, for their contributions today? Uh, I've, you know, we're bringing it in as close as I can to the, uh, you know, within time. Um, more, more than by luck than by judgment, if the truth be told. But, uh, we've got there in the end. Uh, so, uh, item, so can I thank the officers for the work that they've put in? In terms of the best council plan, the performance report, and also the hard work that is still ongoing with the various budget proposals. Because I, I genuinely do think that there is still work going to be done on the budget between now and it finally being agreed. So the Kevins and the Michaels of the world are still going to have to burn the midnight oil. In terms of getting things sorted out before, uh, whoever it is. Uh, that presents the budget in, uh, it's the leader of council, but, um, if you guess where I'm coming from, I haven't a clue who it's going to be. So whoever the, whoever is going to present the budget, uh, has still got some further work being done. So thank you very much for your time and effort on that. So I can finish on agenda item ten. Uh, Becky, do you want to briefly go through this one for us, please?
Uh, certainly, Chair. On your next meeting, you've got an upcoming report on the standards in the private rented sector. An update on the, uh, climate emergency advisory committee and a report on parking strategy and management. You're then looking at fuel poverty and energy efficiency in council housing stock in March. And you've got on the tenth of March, an additional working group to look at the antisocial use of fireworks. Um, members may wish to note, there's also been a discussion about potentially having a meeting in April, which, um, which I will discuss with the Chair and circulate dates as required.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the, uh, one on fireworks certainly came home on New Year's Eve. Because in my area, around about, from about six o'clock onwards, there was a regular supply of fireworks going up. Uh, I personally don't have a dog, but a number of people have complained to me bitterly about how frightened a lot of these dogs were. Over a considerable period of time, rather than a short time where it was all happening, which is not good as it is. But when it was, you know, for almost six hours solid, it was causing a lot of concern for pets, pet owners, uh, in particular. So I think that this particular item is something that we do need to have a look at, at what we can do. Whilst not taking away people's right to enjoy themselves and to celebrate. Because let's be quite honest, last year there wasn't a great deal to celebrate. So it's how we get a balance in terms of what's happening. Uh, councillor Smith, do you indicate?
I did, Chair. Sorry. Um, with regards to the, uh, the fuel poverty in the council housing stock. Um, can I, uh, request that particular attention is paid to high-rise? I know in some parts of the city, um, that's being addressed, but it isn't in ours and, um, others alike, I'm sure. So I, I, you know, I'd, I'd like to get a really good understanding of, of how we can plan for that, if I can, please. Um, I should warn you, I'm sending a letter to Neil Evans on the subject. So, um, I do have a vested interest in it. But I'm really keen that we sort out the fuel poverty.
Gerard, are you still, are you still on the call, Gerard? Is Gerard's name still on the screen? I just wondered if he was.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, sorry, Chair. I'm having some IT issues, but I, I am here, yes.
Did you hear the point that councillor Smith made?
I didn't, unfortunately. If you could just.
Can you just repeat it again, Trish?
Absolutely, Chair. Um, so I, we, uh, we, in the March meeting, we will be looking at fuel poverty in the houses, council housing stock. And I'd like to pay particular attention to, um, the high-rise, um, blocks that we have, please. Um, I know there's some fabulous work going on around the city, uh, district, how, uh, district heating and some air source heat pumps going in. But I'd like to know what the, um, what the plan is for the rest of the, the blocks. Because I know in my own ward, um, we've, I think four high-rise blocks off the top of my head. And, um, they are electric storage heaters, which aren't efficient, are very expensive. And are forcing an awful lot of our residents into fuel poverty.
Yeah. I'm not asking you to answer the question, Gerard. What I'm just saying is if you can take that back. So that when we get the report, that that's fed in to it. Uh, what councillor Smith was also saying was that she was just about to write to Neil Evans about it. Is it best to copy you into this as well or leave it as it is going to Neil? What's your advice?
I'd, I'd appreciate if I was copied into that, councillor.
Don't worry, it will swiftly find its way to Gerard.
No problem. Sorry, Neil. Forewarned his forearms.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay, anybody else get any other comments or councillor Actar?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Uh, with, with, with reference to the antisocial behaviour issue, uh, I would really appreciate. Some sort of report for the, uh, even though we're in pandemic, uh, and what we've noticed in, uh, some part of the city. With the misuse of firework across the city and especially in some pockets of my ward, please.
Yep, that's fine. I think that's noted. And, uh, Becky will make sure that that's fed in. Both generally to any, uh, to Mr Munnies and also to the fireworks, uh, as well. Yep. Anybody, any other comments they would like to make? If not, thank you all for your attendance. Uh, and thank you for your contributions today. They are much appreciated. And I think it does show, uh, the good work that scrutiny does in general and this board in particular. In terms of the work that we are doing. So, and thank you to our guests who have stayed, who have been so scintillated by the quality. Of this, that they've stayed for more. Dearie me. Thank you very much. Thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you soon.